I'll start out with just a hello and welcome, everybody. If I can have your attention. Regani, I don't want to have to call you out. We need your attention. Sorry. I did anyway, though. It's my pleasure to introduce, I think, Rippey. Rippey is going to go ahead and be the master of ceremonies here for congratulations to Mark on his swearing in. I'm just going to kind of ask if you guys can come close to the microphone. That way you'll be on Zoom. So, Rippey, it's all yours.
Great. Mr. Mayor, this will be brief, but a few kind words prior to taking the oath of office about my friend Mark Dickow. It's definitely an honor to stand here on his behalf today. For those who don't know, and most already should, I met Mark when I was all 13 years old because he was my Scott League baseball coach. And I loved he and his brother Paul and the fact that we never lost touch. It goes to show, you know, when they give that title, coach, a coach lasts a lifetime. And I call him that to this day. He gives me advice, and I'm honored to say that sometimes he asks me for mine, which is amazing. I think Mark is well-known as a family man to the highest degree, comes from a great family. You know, I think he believes in all the things that make for a very decent human being and someone worthy of sitting on this city council. So, Coach, I'm super duper proud of you, and I'm going to now read you. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut and its laws, its ordinances, and this city of Bristol enacted pursuant thereto? And that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of city council according to the best of your knowledge and ability to help you guide?
I do.
Congratulations, Coach.
How's it, Mark? I just want to say welcome. You will be a busy boy. We'll see when we get to appointments. But thank you, everybody. Just the way logistics will work here at 6:45, we start our joint city council meeting. And at 7 o'clock, the regular meeting will start. So you're all welcome to stay, but I know that's probably not your intent. So I'm just gonna do a test here. Glenn Armaz, so you here? Can I have one of you come off mute so we can make sure we can hear you?
Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody.
Great. 15 seconds to get started, but thank you. Good evening. All right, I have 6:45 on the button. We will call to order the joint meeting of the city council on August 14th, 2024. We'll start with the pledge. Let's start with introductions. We're going to start on my far right. That's you, Mr. Mace.
John Mace, Board of Finance.
Mary O'Brien, Board of Finance.
Bill Campion, Board of Finance.
Sue Tyler, City Council District Two.
Jacqueline Olson, City Council District Two.
Sebastian Penioto, City Council District One.
Jeff Cagiano, Mayor.
Eric Rosengren, City Council District One.
Gerald Tebow, City Council District Three.
Mark Dickow, City Council District Three.
Nicole Duquette, Board of Finance.
Great. And we actually already heard from Glenn Hyzer and Michael Mazzarelli. I think that's all that we have. So we have a very nice quorum tonight. I think that is everybody, right? Not missing anybody. Oh, no, we're missing one.
Mr. Mayor?
Chair, yes. Yes.
May I just suggest that you give a special welcome. Welcome to the three newbies on this board, right?
Well, he's definitely going to do that. So we have two new Board of Finance members and a new city council member, and I'm going to do that under city council. I'm going to probably do more Mark. And I will get his name right out throughout the whole day, I hope. A little story behind that. But Nicole, why don't you just introduce yourself a little bit greater and tell us a little bit about your background and who you are?
Sure. So, like I said, I'm Nicole Duquette, Board of Finance. I was born and raised in Bristol, moved away for a time out of state, and now I'm back. I am a controller for a distribution company right now and have about 10 years of accounting background.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Bill, you're up next.
Know me. Good evening. I'm Bill Campion. I was born in Waterbury, but about 27 years ago, I was transplanted here to Bristol with my wife. I am currently retired. I was in the emergency medical services business. I ran and operated an ambulance company in Waterbury. 200 employees. We operated 24/7/365 and operated out of Waterbury, Torrington, and we had a district office in Cheshire. And I'm here and retired now and looking forward to serving.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Mark, we're going to save your full introduction for the council meeting, all right? Because that's, I think, a little more appropriate, but that'll be good. All righty, let's move on to number two, which is the approval of the meeting minutes held on July 9th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions, additions, or changes? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the consent agenda, we have items A through H. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw 3A and 3C.
A and C. Okay, can I have a second on that motion to withdraw? Second. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda B, D, E, F, G, and H?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, so Jackie, questions on A and C, I assume? Oh, yeah, why don't you bring them both? We bring them up one at a time, though, if you could, because you might have separate questions.
I'd like to motion to put back 3A on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, so that's 11,933 within the code enforcement operating budget.
All right, my question is in reference to professional fees. I think that's kind of vague, and I'm just wondering exactly what are the professional fees? What does it encompass?
Diane, I'm hoping you can help me on this one, because I'm not sure if these are legal fees or other professional fees. Rick's not here either, so, right?
No, I can get back to you on that, Jackie, but I know there are some contracts, like for demolition and all of that, that get charged to that fund. And I'll get back to you, but I'm certain that's what they are. I don't know.
Okay, it's just, I, you know, I feel that for transparency reasons that we should know at least some of the professional fees. I mean, if there's a lot, I wouldn't expect you to put it all on, on this, but...
Yeah, gets deeper within munis reports and other things. You might be able to pick it up.
Information was on the...
And Diane, how urgent is this? If we, and I'm just thinking ahead here, if we don't get the questions here, is this something we could...
It is a June 30th. I'm sorry. Yes, it is a June 30th transfer. So we would like to get it approved. We can get it any minute, but... Just wanted to bring that up.
We're talking about a grand total of about $6,000. Yeah. $5,000, yeah.
I'm okay with moving the approval. I just thought, you know, maybe going forward.
Okay. That's a very good point, and I think in the future, the departments pretty much fill out these forms, but what we can do is ask them for a lot additional information when they submit them for transfers. But, yeah, the professional fees, I'm sure that they're for contractual services for demolition and those type of things that the code enforcement might need. And I don't know if Councilwoman Tyler has anything to add to that.
So through the chair, I believe that this one $5,000 allotment is for an RFP that we had to put out for a clean and lean on South Street. And the last time I had a conversation with our chief building official, he did say to me that that one particular clean and lean was about the $5,000 mark. So I'm pretty sure that that's what it is, but to address your question, you know, maybe we should get a little bit more information in the future, but I'm pretty sure that's what the $5,000 is.
It gets a valid question.
Make sure that that, there's more information on these going forward.
Okay.
Any other comment or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
With regard to any of these professional fees, I assume they go through Corporation Council's office. They certainly must go through the purchasing department. At one point, there was a Board of Finance conversation about an encyclopedia of all of these so that you could quickly reference them. So I'd bring that point back up so that, for example, with the councilwoman's question on professional fees, she might feel more comfort when a quick summary like this, which is not very detailed, is backed up by the practice of the city, which I think is, is happening now, but could be confirmed, adheres to the highest standards for how those professionals are chosen, how they're compensated, and, and how it's reported to the city council and Board of Finance.
It's a fair point. We've been getting more detail on a lot of things. We also have ClearGov so that when these expenses finally go through and they get posted, people can dig a little bit deeper and see where they are. So point well taken. I will just, you know, state for the record here that this is a $5,000 professional fee, so not, not too crazy, and we'll get that information back to you because of the timing. I'm going to recommend that we, you know, call the vote and move it forward. It sounds like you're comfortable with that, Jackie? Any other comments or questions? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Jackie, bring Seon to the floor for me.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to place item 3C back on the agenda.
Second.
For approval, and that's for $22,803 within the Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services operating budget. And this is trust revenue as of June 30th, 2024. Diane, I'm a little more familiar with this, but I know you're familiar with this, so.
It was easier to explain, but...
Okay, so again, on the miscellaneous expenses, it doesn't really tell us exactly what those expenses are.
Sure. Good question. So what happens with the trust revenue? We don't know the total dollar amount of the trust revenue that will come in for the park trusts. So at the end of the year, if there's any excess trust funds that come in, we appropriate it to that miscellaneous account, and then it gets carried over to the following year. So I'll talk a little bit later about carryovers, because it wasn't spent in '24, but we received it in '24. So those are supposed to be used for park purposes, for park improvements, park capital. It gets carried over through that miscellaneous account into '24, '25, and then when he decides what he wants to use it for, we'll put it into that appropriate account.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments on this? Cheryl?
I was just going to say, they do have in the budget, they are going to use approximately that amount for one of the playgrounds.
Yeah, so it's, it's for capital projects. Very good. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number four is a series of resolutions from our capital improvement, and I will read this. So I'll be, in the absence of an objection, I will ask for a motion to adopt in a single motion of all the resolutions presented under items 4A through 4H of the agenda of this meeting, making appropriations and authorizing borrowings for the following capital projects: indoor air quality commissioning, school security upgrades, district-wide renovation of the senior center facility, BBHD office, and replacement of the Lake Avenue culvert at Mix and Brook. The reading of said resolutions into the minute to be waived and the full text of the resolutions as presented at this meeting to be incorporated into and made part of the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
All righty, any questions on this? Again, all of those things that have gone through capital improvement, Board of Finance, et cetera. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed?
It's a resolution.
It is a resolution. Oh, we have to do a roll call for all of them, even though we waived the reading.
Got away with it.
Sorry, I got caught right off the bat. Go ahead, Erica.
Commissioner Campion?
Aye.
Commissioner Duquette?
Aye.
Commissioner Hyzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mace?
Aye.
Commissioner Mazzarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickow?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Councilmember Penioto?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilmember Tebow?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Number five is the opioid task force. So I'll entertain a motion to make an additional appropriation of $86,000 within the special grants and donations fund funded by the opioid settlement fund.
Second.
Great. Little background on this. I think most of you are aware that we get opioid settlement funds from the state. It's about 15% of the total pool. This is a portion of what we have been appropriated here in the city of Bristol. This is not public money. This is really private money from private industries and firms to go ahead and help with the opioid crisis. We have a unique opportunity here to try a new program that most of you have heard about, and I'm not going to talk too much about it now, because I'm hoping to talk about the success of this program in future meetings. And this went through the opioid task force and Board of Finance, so I think we're all pretty up on this. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any debate questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're on to number six, which is monthly reports. So Diane, we'll have you come back up.
So we are in the process of closing fiscal '24, so the office has been very busy, closing purchase orders, paying final invoices. And I think what you'll see is that on the revenue side, we did very well. All the revenues are in right now. I think the only thing we have left is a six-day collection for tax collections. It's in a core entry that we have to do. Anything that we collect between July 1 and the end of August, we actually put back to the prior year. So that's really the only thing on revenues that's pending right now, but as you can see in the report, our tax revenues were at 99%, almost 99, almost 100% in collections. Building permits done very well last year. Conveyance taxes and our investment earnings really knocked it out of the park. 290.7% of budget. Granted, a lot of that had to do with interest rates, just went in the right direction for us, and we did make some strategic changes as I've been reporting. Overall, our revenues came in $5.1 million over what we had anticipated. So that puts us in a good position to handle what comes next. On the expenditure side, we're still in the process of closing out, like I said, invoices, purchase orders. We will have, right now, if I look at the report, we have about $2 million in unexpended funds on the city side. But we will be recommending carrying over about a little over $1 million. We do that every year for some of the new members. We look at some items that may not have been able to have been purchased during the year, and we take those funds and we carry them over into the, into the following year. So some of them are pretty standard. So that will be about $1.1 million at this point. And then we do have to fund the equipment building sinking fund. That was 1.4. All that being said, no surprise, the Board of Ed right now, when I prepared the report, was at a $3.7 million deficit. As of today, it's at 3.6. So we will need to address that as we close out the year. In closing out the year, as you know, we always try to keep a fund balance range between 12 and 15% of our expenditures. We typically try to plan so we're around 14%. So what you will see is we will work towards that goal with all of these factors that we have to take into consideration. The carryovers, the equipment building sinking fund, Board of Ed, and then we do want to, I would like to see whatever we have left, put it back into that mill rate stabilization reserve fund, because we did use the majority of it for the current year budget. So that's the plan for the '24 fiscal year end. Are there any questions on that?
Seeing none.
Okay, and then as far as fiscal '24, '25, very early, not much to really report there, so I'm not even, I don't even want to go into that unless anybody has any specific questions. Nothing? Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have to make one more comment about the revenues and the investment earnings in particular, because Chairman Mikowski is not here. They probably will be lowering interest rates very soon. That was just maybe an add-on to what you said. I think you, you know, talked about that appropriately, but it's highly unlikely we won't see that kind of investment earning returns next year, so.
The only good thing is, is we did not bring the budget up to this level.
Correct. Yes, we did smart budgeting.
Maybe you've worked with me a while. I don't like to chase those revenues when they go up, because they will come down at some point. Two other things I forgot to mention, I'm sorry. The auditors were here this week. They're completing their preliminary work Friday. Actually, they might be done tomorrow. Everything has been going very well. They've been getting everything that they need. And then they'll be back on October 28th for three weeks to finish up. And I know you may have received the email from Jody, ClearGov, we did post the digital budget book. So take a look at it if you have any comments, questions, suggestions. We're open for it, because it's a, it's a moving document. We can always make changes, and then we will look at next year, incorporate better things. I even have plans for next year, what I want to do a little bit differently, so it's there if you need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Diane. I don't think there's any other business to come before us, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion, we, a motion carries where we are adjourned. We have a public hearing is supposed to start.
Michael J. Dudko, 116 Lewis Road. Just a little preface. 25 years ago, I was part of a family in Bristol that the land was taken for eminent domain. We had an extended family there. I'm, I'm interested in this act, and I, I have commented on it whenever it came up for five years, and likely 2004, 2009, 2014, and 2000, I missed probably likely 2019. What concerns me originally, I have, I am very sure of this, I wouldn't have come at those times, at that time, the Act as written with the State of Connecticut mentioned the power of eminent domain. I did some research now, and it's, it's not listed here anymore. It might have been revised. I saw something yesterday about 2016, they revisited this. Those wordings were taken, taken out. I, I'm not sure, and this is why I'm, I'm here tonight. I, I want to be sure that those words, "in domain," are definitely not a part of this act anymore, that you cannot add, add this locally to the, to the wording. I imagine that the, the city attorneys can answer some of these questions that I have. I, I, I read that the power of eminent domain shows up in the Connecticut general statutes or the main guideline. But I'm being very cautious. What I went through and my family, that's a dangerous two, two words. So I'm, for, for the citizens of Bristol, I'm very cautious. I don't, I want to be 100% sure. If I, I don't like the acceptance of this, that eminent domain isn't part of the wording here at all, and that you cannot locally tamper with this. Okay, so, you know, I got some response from the attorneys on this, that that would not happen, that cannot happen, whatever. They could, they can comment on it. Just to mention, I'm not going to dwell upon it, January 1999 was the first meeting. I saw my uncle's house. He was outside the red line. They weren't not taking his house. Two months later, he didn't play ball with the city. The next drawings by the BDA, his house is included. What sits there today, this is why it's so dangerous. It, it's empty. Spots are empty. His house could have remained. And our 1897 house that I grew up in, one of the oldest houses on, on Middle Street at that time, across the street from Bleachers, that could have remained. So, so it's such an important issue, because, look, hey, it could have still stayed there. I don't understand. It was used as a power tool to take someone's home. It's a power tool. My grandparents were half Ukrainian. Now you might understand why we were so understanding of what happens, what's happening on the other side of the world with the Ukrainians. Most of my, my grandparents on my mother's side, who lived in the house, were Ukrainians, so I, I will not tie your hands. I could see supporting this. As long as it has, you've got powers here that, that you do need for development. I'm not against that, but I just don't want any kind of tying in, not knowing that the citizens don't know about what, what that issue is, if eminent domain ever appears. I'd like to hear some comment from the Corporation Council, that this is noteworthy to be seen with this, and it cannot be tampered with.
Great. So we're, we're in a public hearing right now. We're not going to take any action on this, but we can potentially follow up with you. Again, just on the outset here, you were the one that pointed out that eminent domain is not part of this public act. And I think, and that might have been when they took away the referendum and the, and the people to vote, so.
Eventually.
You can follow up with, with our office, and we'll, we'll get the 100% answer for you, but I appreciate your testimony. Thank you very much, Michael. Are there any other public comments on the powers authorized under the Act? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Agreed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're going to roll in one minute right into the council meeting, so let me just get there and we'll roll into it. Make sure everybody is set. Yeah, we'll ask Club Council to come join us up here. It's in the right order. Erica, we're still rolling. Are you good, Erica? Okay, so I'm going to call the city council meeting on August 14th to order at 7:14 PM. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so, flag to the right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number, oh, we got to do introductions. That's right. We'll do them quickly here, and this is perfect. We're going to end the right way. Go ahead, Susan.
Sue Tyler, City Council District Two.
Jacqueline Olson, City Council District Two.
Jacqueline Olson, City Council District Two.
Sebastian Panyoto, City Council District One.
Jeff Kajano, Mayor.
Eric Rosengren, City Council District One.
Gerald Tebow, City Council District Three.
And before you even start talking, I wanted to say Mark Dickow. I want to say it about five times. Quick little story here. I guarantee you at some point I will call him Paul. I went to school with his brother Paul for four years in high school and Dickow is just Paul in my head. So welcome, Mark. Congratulations on your win and welcome to the city council. And go ahead and give us a introduction and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Mark Dickow, Council District Three. I'm a lifelong Bristol resident. Born and raised on Federal Hill, now live in Forestville. My background pretty much completely within medical insurance and healthcare. Over the past three years, I've been working on government contracts. Currently working on the No Surprise Billing Act with Medicare CMS. That's pretty much it.
Thanks. Welcome, Mark.
Welcome.
Thank you. We do have two ceremonial things and I apologize. It's been a crazy week with special election and everything to the Erica. So I didn't get it on the agenda. But first I do want to have a little bit of a somber moment and a moment of silence. So Fern Cornichuk, who has been a longtime Assistant Personnel Director for the town. She retired in 1996. She was married to her husband, Paul, for 45 years. They raised her two children here in Forestville. The children are out of town, but she served the city of Bristol extremely well. I didn't get the number of years, but it was a very long time. So if we can just take a moment of silence to think about Fern and her family. Thank you. So we move to a certainly much lighter topic and a topic that's a little bit more dear to my, to my heart and something that I think is tremendous. So, you know, service to our country is extremely important. And there aren't too many times that, and I might have the days wrong here because I didn't write it down, that you have somebody that serves for 45 years, three weeks and two days? Forty two years, three weeks, two days. So today I want to actually invite Patrick Nelligan up. He is Chief Warrant Officer Five, Patrick R. Nelligan. We're going to give him an all heart award for serving his country for a very long time. And I actually had to look this up too, because chief warrant officer is not something I was that familiar with in the army. You know, they started this in 1819 and this is something that is actually commissioned directly by the president. They are a technical expert. They're, they're definitely valuable for their skills or guidance and expertise to commands and organizations in a particular field. Patrick's done an excellent job, actually probably retired a little bit early than he wanted to because of an injury, but he has been dedicated to his craft. By the way, so much dedicated, I'm going to embarrass you a little bit, I think here, because I, I couldn't remember this. So I had to write this down as well. His awards, this is going to take a minute, I apologize, but it's worth it. A Chief Warrant Officer Five, Nelligan's, by the way, that's the highest rank in Chief Warrant Officer. Awards and decorations include the Legions of Merit with Oak Leaf Cluster. I gotta get my glasses, sorry. There they are. Oak Leaf Cluster, Meritorious Service Medal with Oak Leaf Cluster, Army Commendation Medal, Army Achievement Medal with four oak leaf clusters, Army Reserve Components Achievement Medal with nine oak leaf clusters, National Defense Service Medal with one Bronze Star, Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Military Outstanding Volunteer Service Medal, Armed Forces Reserve Medal with Gold Hourglass and with M Device, Non-Commissioned Officers Professional Development Ribbon with numeral two, Army Service Ribbon, Army Overseas Service Ribbon, Army Reserve Component Overseas Training Ribbon with numeral two, Driver Badge with Driver W bar. I hope I didn't miss any, but with that, I just want to give a round of applause to Patrick. I'll hand him the word. And we'll, we'll hear from him in a second.
So I'll, I'll be quick. Thank you. This is unexpected and I, I think what, what really is my pride and joy is down one floor, the Veteran Strong Community Center. One of, one of the things that I was most proud of was in early 2000s, the Army Reserve was looking for locations to actually create these virtual forts, they called it, for veterans, Army Reservists, National Guard that needed services that they couldn't get to a regular military base. And I went to the commanding general and I said, you've never seen a town like Bristol. And he said, oh, I hear that all the time. I said, no, really, you need to come to Bristol. And he did for one of our Boulevard ceremonies when we used to do it. And he said, you're right, we're going to open one. So we had that going for about four years. And then like most government programs, they cut the funding and we were in a bit, bit of a pinch. And I went out, solicited all of the towns around us and said, what we have in Bristol is special. We support veterans like no other. Would you like to come on board and help pay for this Veteran Strong Center? And they said, yes. So Donna and Amy are doing a fantastic job, but that all started because of what Bristol meant to the leadership of the army and the Army Reserve. So as, as the mayor had said, I hit 42 years. My, my journey started three weeks after graduating Bristol Central, right into basic training and never looked back. And I, I only joined for two years for college money, so silly me. It's been a great journey and I'm glad to be back. I'm glad to see what's happened. City Hall is beautiful. You're all doing a great job and I look forward to what the future looks like supporting all of you. Thanks again.
Thank you, Patrick. And I, I shared it with the council. So Pat, I just want to thank you too. He gave me his challenge coin, which is up in my office, very cool. And the, something that I'll treasure and keep. So congratulations and get back involved in Bristol, by the way. So that's great. You'll continue to help us. All right, number two on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We can take both of these together. We have the regular city council meeting held on July 9th and the approval of the special city council meeting held on July 22nd. Can I have a motion to approve?
So second.
Any comments, additions, changes, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're on to number three, which is public participation. Michael, you, you spoke under, I think you signed up there, but you're good, right? You wanted. No. Great. Who do you have come on up? Mike, you can let me know too, if you're the only one signed up there. If there's somebody else, just hand it to me after you're done. But name and address for the record. Okay, go ahead.
For the record, Mike Arasenko, 40 Palmer Place. I'm going to be very brief. I just want to congratulate my friend, Mark Dickow, on his incredible victory. I think the hard work that he showed during the campaign, especially 40 days, wasn't it? Thirty days will show the kind of work ethic and determination that you will bring to the council. I think people in District Three are very lucky. And I can't think of a better team with you and Cheryl in District Three. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. All right, is there, oh, thank you. Oh, yeah, Mike's gone, said Duck, Duck goes, okay. Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to address the council? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to announcements. Mark, I didn't remind you about this, but I don't know if you have any announcements. We'll, we'll start, am I right again? So if you have announcements, you can get those ready. Go ahead, Sue.
Okay, I've got just a few. I just want to remind everyone that this coming up Saturday, August 17th, from 10 AM to 6 PM at Rockwell Park is the Rockwell Park Summer Festival, presented by West End Association. It's got music and tons of food vendors, craft vendors. It's got the car show and they have a record breaking 160 vendors this year. So that's a great time by all. Under the senior center, they have a lot going on over at the senior center. The state senior cornhole tournament is on August 21st. The birthday party for all 90 plus year olds who are having a birthday. Well, everybody's having a birthday this year, but if you're over 90, that will be on August 28th. Fall class registration is September 4th from nine to 11. And those fill up pretty quickly. So if you're interested in signing up for those classes, you need to be there ahead of time. Grandparents Day Bingo and Pizza is September 13th from four to six. And if there's any other information that you want to find out about the senior center or to see what they're doing for our seniors or maybe volunteering and helping out. The senior center is on our Bristol, Connecticut All Heart website under Senior Center Services or their phone number is 860-584-7895. Moving on to our PD, the one thing I really want to give a big shout out for, in case you didn't read it on the front page of the paper, the Bristol Police Department did receive on July 27th, Kalia accreditation. So this is an advanced accreditation. This is by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. This is like the, the top award that law enforcement agencies strive for. It takes much work. There's a lot of different standards to meet for it. And it usually takes police departments, you know, a good deal of time to, to meet this accreditation standard. So this is like an elite award. And I just want to say congratulations to the police department for all of the efforts put into that. And I think that's all I have. I think that's it.
Jackie, announcements?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. The Parks and Rec Department is going to have a new playground up on Federal Hill Green. And the community is asked to vote on what your favorite design is. So the vote, the voting will be open until 5:30 PM on Thursday, August 29th. You can go to bristlrec.com. And then if you click on projects, the projects icon, and then on Federal Hill, and you'll see two designs and then you pick the one that you like. And I already voted. Just a reminder that the Halloween Spooktacular is on Saturday, October 26th at the Memorial Boulevard from three to eight PM. And this is a great event for family and friends. They're going to have coffin races, haunted spirits, brew tent, trick or treating, face painting. So it's, it's a good event for families. The last thing that I have is DK Movement Cares is going to be having their second 5K race on August 24th. This is to benefit the Bristol Special Olympics. And the starting point is the Bridge Community Church on School Street. Check in is from seven to eight 30 in the morning and the race begins at nine AM. And there's still time to sign up if you're interested in the race or to donate to support DK Movement Cares, which is a nonprofit organization. That's it.
Flat run up and down the boulevard too in downtown. So I am running it. So that's why I know it's flat, but that's good.
Flat run, okay, got it.
That's important. No hills. Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to recognize some folks for helping out with an issue that we had over the last month. We had a water service was interrupted on the Lake Avenue Cemetery. And it has, I had a resident reach out to me and she had loved ones buried there, including her husband, who is a veteran. And so folks were unable to get water there to the cemetery, to water plants and flowers and whatnot, which is a big deal for folks that have loved ones there and family. So I want to recognize Diane Waldron and thank you for working with me and Ray Rogazinski, who's on Zoom, and also Rob Longo and Kelly McGlaughlin from the Water Department for their hard work to get this resolved. There was somewhat of a trip up with the billing, the water, the water service and the metering to the cemetery. So I was in frequent contact with the resident. She was very appreciative of the, the resolution and she's able to go there and, and take care of what she needs to do. So I know a lot of folks don't really get recognized for some of that work when, when it gets done. But thank you guys for helping out with that. We really appreciate it and I'm sure the residents do too.
Great. Thanks. I have a couple of announcements myself, which I don't always, but I'm actually doing an announcement for the School Readiness Council. The School Readiness Council is happy to announce the winners of the Fire Truck Raffle, which was held on June 20th. Two lucky winners were chosen by Police Chief Morella and Fire Chief Hart to ride to the first day of kindergarten on a fire truck. 403 students were registered for kindergarten on time and were entered into the drawing, which is more than last year, which that's good. The winners were Xander Fuentes and Piper McKee. And they'll be attending Mountain View School and West Bristol Schools respectively. One other announcement too, Greater Bristol Homes, that's an organization. I think actually there'll be a news article about this tomorrow that has been buying up properties in Bristol that are abandoned or where they've had a fire or, you know, buildings that were taken down. And they are continuing to try to beautify Bristol. So they actually have a grant program that they're opening up to people in Bristol. I believe you have to be in a certain area, but I'm not finding that right now. But you can check it out. Applications must be completed and mailed by August 30th, 2024. It's a $500 grant to improve the look of your property. You certainly can spend a lot more than $500, but the grant will cover the first $500 of those completed projects. And you can get information at greaterbristolhomes.org. Those are my announcements. Eric.
I just have one. It's a quick reminder, the outdoor pools at Page Park and Rockwell Park will be closing for the season this Sunday, August 18th. If you haven't visited the pools yet this summer, be sure to head over for an end of summer dip.
Cheryl.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple please. The Miss Chrysanthemum Organization is looking for contestants. So if you're in kindergarten through grade 12, there's a way to participate in this annual beloved event. Little Miss Chrysanthemum, oh gosh, Little Miss Mom, okay. For elementary age contestants, junior Miss Mom for middle school age contestants, and then Miss Mom for high school age contestants. The mission of the festival is to teach and encourage self-confidence, creative accomplishment, community service and positive role modeling among young women within the community. And I can attest that several of our previous Miss Moms have done so much for Bristol. And we have so many young ladies that just don't participate in this, but they do a lot of service projects. There's no experience necessary and they're accepting applications until September 1. The event takes place on Friday, 9/27. There will be a link if you go on Facebook and type in Miss Chrysanthemum. You will be able to find the application. I've posted it on my Facebook page. You can go there as well. It's time for the Boys and Girls Club Second Color Run. Now, this is a fun event. You really, the term is, I think they chalk you. Is that the correct term? So I ended up with so many colors that just took a week to wash out, I think. But the race is coming up. All proceeds go back into our local Boys and Girls Club. The date of the event is going to be September 7th. You can register now online. The first few hundred registrations will get a T-shirt, a free T-shirt. All runners get a swag bag, a race program. There are awards and there's an after party with food trucks, a DJ and everything. The cost is $30 for adults, 13 through 99. And there is a $5 kids run. So this event is a lot of fun. So if you need to have any questions, you can see me. The mayor shared it on his page. It's on the Bristol Boys and Girls Club page as well. I wanted to give an update on the farmer's market. As we've shared before, this was the first year we've taken the farmer's market through the nonprofit. Several people came together, became the officers. I happen to be the treasurer of the farmer's market myself. And we continued this event. And one of the things that we wanted to do was fundraise so that we can turn around and have more vendors in future years. But one of the key things we wanted to do is reach those that have food insecurity and be able to put good nutritional, fresh food into the homes and kitchens of people in Bristol. So one of the things that has happened at the farmer's market for a few years is we accept SNAP credits. So people can come in, they can redeem their SNAP credits electronically for tokens. But this year, through the state of Connecticut, Fresh Match and True Match, we applied for grants and have been awarded grant money. And this allows us to double those SNAP credits. So for the first eight weeks through this last Saturday, we have, this is not what has been redeemed, but what has been spent at the farmer's market, $1,340 in SNAP credits and another 807 for Fresh Match and another 515 for True Match. And that's the grant dollars. So a. So a total of two thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars have gone out into homes that have put fresh food into their kitchens. Um, this doesn't include the WIC benefits that many mothers and seniors have, the senior center. Um, so this market is reaching, um, an area that is known as a food desert. And actually, um, we're located, because everybody's still trying to find us, at ten Main Street. Now, this is, um, right across from where the old Walgreens used to be. The Elks is on the corner. So we're right in there by, um, ten Main Cafe. And so the hours are ten AM to one PM every Saturday through the middle of November. Um, and then lastly, I always love to give the Downtown Live updates. We've got a show this Saturday. Um, this is Chris Funk. Uh, it's redefining wonder. It's a music and magical show all in one. Um, it runs from six to seven thirty. Tickets are still available. Everybody who's seen Chris before comes away amazed. And then on September seventh is Jimmy and the Parrots. This is a Jimmy Buffett kind of concert or a, a cover band. It's, the Boulevard's going to be rocking. Grab your flip flops, come on down. And that concert's from seven to nine. And one more thing that Downtown Live, and this is all brought to you from the Bristol Arts and Culture Commission, is we're going to start Throwback Thursdays. So we're going to start with movies, starting on August twenty seventh. For five dollars a person, you can come into the theater, you can sit back on the big screen and watch a classic. So the first movie is Honey, I Shrunk the Kids. Many of you have seen that. If not, it's great. Come see it. Some of the other ones coming up are Indiana Jones, Jurassic Park, E.T. And this is every Thursday. We're just going to open up that theater and we're going to have a great time watching movies. And then at the Spooktacular that Jackie talked about, there'll be two shows. We're going to have Hocus Pocus as a two PM matinee, and The Terminator, which I think is celebrating an anniversary. That's why The Terminator was chosen at seven thirty. So we, everybody said they miss this theater here in Bristol. We're giving it an opportunity to sit with your friends and family and have a great time, and it's only five dollars a person. Those are my announcements.
Yep. And that I learned is general admission too. So you buy five bucks and then you're going to go sit wherever you want, right?
Correct.
Good. All right. Thanks, Cheryl. Mark, any announcements?
I do not have any announcements.
That's fine. Uh, you will have plenty of experience over the next month where you'll get lots of announcements from all the boards and commissions to be part of. All right. Um, so we move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda considered, uh, consists of items A through F. And I do know we have to withdraw one because there's been a slight change.
Right. Here's the chair. I would like to pull item F from the consent agenda.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And Cheryl, can you give me a motion to do B? I'm sorry, A through E.
I make a motion?
Oh, I did want to pull.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Five C and five E.
Five C and five E. So, um, can do that in form of a motion. You'd like to?
I'd like to make a motion to pull five C and five E from the consent agenda.
Okay. And Cheryl, hopefully you're keeping track.
Yep.
So then that's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So Cheryl, we're going to do?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items five, A, B, D. I think that's it.
That's it. Yep. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Um, I just want to make this answer to it. I, I probably shouldn't have to, but consent agenda was out last week. So if we have questions on these upfront, I would appreciate, it gets a little confusing here. And you can ask your questions ahead of time as well, too. Uh, let's do F first because I actually had a change to it. So go ahead, Cheryl.
And that's why this item was pulled. There was an update to the amount. Um, the amount that, uh, was in the agenda was three million, three forty-four, one oh eight. It is actually, um, so the motion, I make a motion to approve item three F, but changed that amount to three million, three hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Great. Um, yeah, so the state did this to us last minute and, uh, we now have the correct amount. Uh, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, Jackie, please bring C. Yep, five C.
I apologize, Mayor. I didn't get a chance to look at the, um,
That's okay. It's just, yep.
The agenda until this afternoon. Anyway, okay, on five C, I'm just-
Can you bring the motion up first? Make a motion to approve five C?
To approve five C?
Second.
Great. All those, uh, now we'll discuss it. Sorry, I got to ask your question.
Okay, um, if this proposition, uh, the acquisition goes through, what would be the purpose of this property? Uh, is it going to be torn down or?
This is the property that was in the flood plain, uh, right, Roger? So come on up just to make sure I get it right and add any color to it. Um, this is a federal grant that comes through. The city is kind of the, the go-between that makes this all happen.
That's correct. It's under a grant from the USDA, the National Cons- the National Resources Conservancy Services. Um, so we have a grant to take, uh, acquisition of the property and demolish the, the structures that are on it for flood mitigation. We had done this some years back on Frederick Street. And this is a similar program. The property is, uh, off of the Small Brook feeding into the copper mine, uh, right behind, uh, Edgewood School.
I, I think he nailed it. Ray's got his hand raised. Did we miss anything, Ray, between the two of us?
Uh, just through the chair, uh, just to supplement what, you know, Roger indicated. It's through the NRCS, which is National Conservation, uh, you know, Service. It's, uh, previous grants was actually from FEMA. This grant pays for a hundred percent. And then as Roger indicated, it's, it's a, it was a property prone or flooding. So it's, uh, the intent is to, uh, you know, you know, demolish the building and a, uh, uh, return it to its natural state. So it will be open space, open state space where the restriction that, you know, it has to stay open space undeveloped. And it's a, uh, the city's net cost is like a thousand dollars for administrative fees. Other than that, all fees are covered by the grant.
Very comprehensive answer. I think we got it with all three. Any other questions? Nope. All right. We'll call that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, Jackie, bring on E.
I'd like to make a motion to put five E back on the agenda.
Second.
Great. Um, this one I can speak to. So one twenty-two High Street was, uh, completely redeveloped, really from very poor, uh, lighted condition to a condition that is actually renting, uh, in a very nice way right now. Uh, the previous owner who did that did not follow through, quite honestly, on the timeliness of the paperwork to get this abatement that is kind of one of those things that happened through the Bristol Code of Ordinances, five dash fifty-seven. Um, we did bring this through to give the current new owner the same benefits.
So my question is?
Yep. I just might, I, I had to give you the background on it because I thought that was important.
How long is the tax assessment freeze for? How long is? What's that period?
Anybody know offhand? I think five years, Justin is saying. I think that sounds right.
That's all I need. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to number six, which is reports and committee reports. I'm going to check with Corp Counsel here. Um, we, we did this through joint counsel, so we don't need a motion here. I'm just going to give people a quick update on this one, correct? So, um, I, I spoke about this a little bit at Joint Board, but for those that are new to us here on the council meeting, didn't hear that earlier. We are taking eighty-six thousand dollars of the opioid settlement money. Fifteen percent of the total funds that comes from the pharma companies, from the distributors and everybody else, comes to the cities and towns to spend as they wish. Obviously, it has to be opioid, uh, related. And, uh, then the other eighty-five percent the state has, which is something that people can go after for grants. In this case, we're taking this, uh, you know, this private money and we're, uh, going to work towards a new program that we don't want to talk about too much because we want to see how it works. But it's an innovative approach to handle a homeless, uh, condition in a property that the city owned for many years and is sold to a private developer. So I think that answers everybody else. I'm sure everybody on the council is well aware. We've been talking about it for a while. So I'm going to move on to six B, and we have a salary committee item, and I'll turn that over to you, Cheryl.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this item addresses, um, adding two sworn officers to our police force, raising the, uh, allotted number from one twenty-two to two, one twenty-four. These two positions specifically would be assigned as community outreach and wellness officers and be funded through tax revenues from local cannabis sales. The key responsibilities are listed in the attachment to the agenda. We spent some, uh, robust discussion at our salary committee. We also backed into several things when we researched this, as well as we had the chief, um, at the meeting to answer questions. We did look at the cannabis revenues that have been received to date, uh, through the state and, um, annualize those. And it's, it's well in excess to cover these two positions fully with benefits. Um, and we also looked at what the Public Act required, and there's only so many places that you can actually, I just had it open here, you can actually spend the funds in. Um, and let me just open that back up. I just had that. Um, you can do it on streetscapes, education programs, mental health and addiction service, community civic engagement efforts. And we felt that the job description that the chief had provided us and the discussion of, of how, um, these officers with collaboration, mental health support, uh, partnership building, crises management. These are things that they're addressing now. But now we'll have two officers dedicated to this, which will free up the other officers to maintain the other duties. Maybe they're on traffic, maybe they're on something else, their regular duties, and have these two dedicated officers. Um, when we pass the cannabis, I know many of us, um, promised those funds would go right back into the community. This is an excellent, uh, way to do that, to support those in need, as well as give the resources to the police department. And the salary committee unanimously voted to forward this to council. So I would, Chief, would you like to come up and say anything on this? Oh, I didn't do the motion yet. I'm sorry. Did I? No, I didn't do the motion.
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Okay. Let me start the motion because I'm out of line. Okay.
No, you're good. We could do it either way. I just-
I make a motion that, um, we increase our sworn staffing level by two positions. These positions would be assigned as community outreach and wellness officers.
As described here.
Described.
Second.
Great. Why don't you talk about it a little bit, Chief, and then we'll open up to debate and questions?
Yeah, um, thank you very much. That was really concise, uh, explanation. I think the, uh, the two community police officers that we have assigned will be assigned Monday through Friday, both first and second shift. Um, our numbers show that that's where the greatest demand is for our personnel. Greatest number of psych assist calls that we respond to. And what we found was that this is, um, this position, these two positions will fit the, the mandate as described in the legislation, um, well, while supplementing our manpower, um, for the police department and obviously, um, provide us additional patrol officers on the street as well. So.
Great. Let me first open it up to any questions while we have Chief Morello at the dais.
To the chair, uh, I don't think this question is for the chief, but, um, in the event of revenue from the cannabis is no longer able to sustain these salaries, do we have a plan? Because I've noticed that the revenue has decreased some month after month.
Um, I do, I did, do, do want to address that. So, um, we have a second cannabis store and we kind of waited until that came online. They had ten days of sales and they did nearly a hundred thousand dollars of revenue for us. So, um, I, I don't believe that it is true that they've declined dramatically. There, there, this summer, there has been a, a slight decline. But I think the conservative estimates would be that, uh, we would be fine. We also have, I don't know the number, but it's a couple hundred thousand dollars of cushion. Um, so because we've been collecting these funds far longer. And to be very fair too, by the way, this has been on the table, something that we had hoped to do years ago, um, before Chief Morello. Um, but we had to get our staffing up and we had obviously some major issues in our police department. So, so I think we have some backup. Um, in the event that this did not sustain itself with that, I think we'd have to take a look at that. And I don't know if you have any other comments on that.
Just add the numbers and calculations we went with were at top step, police officer. Uh, there's no, nothing to say that both positions are going to be, or either position will be at top step. So we have a little built-in cushion there. So if we have somebody who's, uh, step two or three, you know, our, our rates, we have several years before we hit that, that.
Uh, yeah. We, we would probably have a year look if something catastrophic happened with cannabis, uh, sales, which I guess is possible, but we would, we have at least, in my opinion, a year to almost a two-year cushion right now.
Through the chair, we have, through July, we had three hundred thirty-five thousand, nine seventy-seven, ninety-seven.
Yep. So that's a pretty good cushion to start with. But I, I think your point is valid and, uh, if it does happen, we will have to reconsider that.
Thank you.
To piggyback on her question, so is this an automatic increase of two personnel for the police department regardless of whether we can fund it through the cannabis money?
Yes. So we, our, our, our staffing level will go to a hundred and twenty-four sworn, correct?
Even if the cannabis money dried up, we still are going to keep those two officers. We're not going to pull those off.
At this point, and we'd have to look at it through the Board of Finance and through the budget process moving forward if something were to change. I, I just have to make it very clear that I feel very confident, number one, that we have a huge, you know, leg going forward in a pretty good pool. And, uh, I don't anticipate a huge drop off. We were pretty conservative with the numbers. Because technically, we could have probably asked for three, but we, we did not. So I think we're taking a conservative approach. Again, the cannabis decision, just to put this out on the record, was one of the more difficult decisions that we all made. Uh, many people asked, you know, what we're going to do, the money, that we were just doing this for the money. This is direct help, uh, for some of those people that might have been against this for other reasons. And many of our officers were probably not for legalizing cannabis in the state, but it's, it's a legal thing out there. And I, I think it's a great reuse of these funds. Other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, one more question. Um, so were these, will these officers be working with any other, uh, people that do outreach? Like, I know somebody at Wheeler Clinic will be doing that as well. Will they be coordinated with them?
Yes, absolutely. That's going to be one of our core, our missions is to work with different outside agencies. Uh, we currently have in-house, um, social worker, that clinician that works with us through CHMA. And, um, yeah, there's going to be a lot of partnerships involved with that. The goal is really have A to Z coverage for people who, who need that assistance, um, so that they don't get lost, um, in the system. Uh, we have follow-up with them and that, um, we're not reinventing the wheel every time we come into contact with them. Because that's what we see often is that, um, officers, it's a new officer each and every time that goes to this one or two individuals' homes or, or places of root, abode. And, uh, it's like having a star all over. And so we're trying to, we're working to avoid that by building up that relationship, um, and making sure that there's a consistency in, in services.
Thank you.
I, I just want to add to that too, because there are other models, and it was actually, uh, New Milford, uh, Connecticut that started this when I was first elected. I was at a CCM conference and they show that the continuity of one person over time, these things are long processes and in order to get people to trust an individual to go get the help, uh, that they need, it, it takes months and sometimes years, unfortunately. But, um, that's the consistency that we're looking to deliver with these two officers.
Just a comment through the chair. Um, with the consistency, yeah, I wanted to back that up and agree with you on that. Um, but it's like reinventing the wheel. Like you said, now these officers be the point people. Like, let's say another officer goes during third shift. Um, they can refer back to these officers. So it's just consistent. Uh, instead of calling two, one, one, uh, three times in three shifts, you know, so I think, I think that's just, that's what one of the bigger things that sold me.
Yep. Thank you. Great. Any other comments from Salary Committee, right? So we?
We have a motion. We had a second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? I think we're ready to call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. I'm very excited about this. So that's good. And we have some officers that are ready to go. I'm actually starting to do some of this work already. Number six C is Ordnance Committee. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Sebastian. You have two items.
I'll go ahead and make a, uh, emotional way of reading for the first here. In accordance with section forty-one F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances to be introduced, the state pertaining to section two dash eighty be waived.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Go with the motion.
Uh, the motion here, in accordance with section forty-one F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four at four forty-five PM in Meeting Room one dash one, City Hall, first floor, one eleven North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordnance Committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by city charter.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Continue, Sebastian.
Are very much in tandem and in the same spirit here. I'll start with a motion to waive the reading in accordance with Section 41F of the Charter of the City of Bristol. Hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the, to the Code of Ordinances to be introduced to the state pertaining to Section 2-86 be waived.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Now the motion.
In accordance with Section 41F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the city, that the time and place of Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, at 4:50 PM in Meeting Room 1-1, City Hall, First Floor, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordnance Committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by city charter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
I hereby moved, hereby move that Chapter 10 Solid Waste, Article 1, and general sections 10-6 and 10-7 of the Court of, Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby included to read as follows. I further move that the city of, that the city clerk publish said additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol.
Second. Great, anything you want to comment on this one before we vote?
This is, in regards to Public Works allows for, we have discussion, we did have discussion prior meetings here, allows for fines for overflow barrels, addresses salvaging issues of folks taking items in and out of barrels, providing additional barrels for those overflow situations, and in some very specific instances allows the city to provide barrels, or I'm sorry, trash pickup to water properties on border streets.
Yep. Any comments or questions from anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Okay, I think those are all of our committee action items that we need to take, so are there any reports, Owen, we'll go right down the order that you'd like to provide? Sue, reports on any of your committees?
Just real quick on, on code enforcement, we are really, we are doing an awesome job of closing out a lot of the cases, the files that we've had on the agenda for long, for many months. And we have a couple of things going on this, this past month that I just want to kind of highlight. We are doing our first fix and lean, that is the professional fees item that Jackie, you asked about. It's the first time that we're doing, you've probably all heard about our clean and leans, and we've done those on several properties, but this is the first time we're doing a fix and lean. And for those of you who are familiar with the South Street House with the scaffolding, that one, a motion was made in code enforcement, and we put it out for RFP, because we could not gain compliance from the owner, and I think there was an open permit from 2016, that we finally took this action, and it's going to be fixed properly, building permit is going to be pulled, and the scaffolding is going to be gone, and then all of the cost of doing these repairs that should have been done by the homeowner is going to be leaned onto the property. We also are in the process right now, our Corporation Council has been working overtime and double time on, on some of these. They have also started foreclosure proceedings on two different properties, where we have over $70,000 worth of tickets filed as judgments already. We also, as mentioned in the consent calendar, we had a tax assessment freeze application for 122 High Street that came through code enforcement. We've also had our Corporation Council working very closely with probate court, and opening up a probate case for a property that, that was never done, when it should have been a couple of years ago. Our tickets have increased, our collections have increased, and no, we're not writing tickets just to bring in revenue, we are writing tickets to gain compliance and to get property, properties up to snuff, so that's just a little bit, and I just want to say that our code enforcement team is working really, really hard every single day, sometimes up to about 15 site visits a day.
Yep, getting very organized and certainly seeing major progress on that. Took a lot of things off the list, and that's the goal, is to rehabilitate the projects, the properties. Very good, anything else from you, Sue?
I think that's it.
Jackie, any committee reports?
No committee reports.
Great, Sebastian?
Further, thank you.
Eric, do you have anything?
Nothing this month.
Cheryl, I know you have at least one.
I always do.
Well, ACO, I want to hear about that.
I do, but first before, I want to start with Public Works. You know, there, the city is currently contracting for snowplow vendors for the upcoming 24-25 season, and vendors are procured by the city for an hourly rate when the snow accumulates three to four inches. Now, a great debate happened at the last Public Works meeting, because we struggled to find vendors last year, so the rates were revisited and increased. So there's been considerable increases, recognizing that vehicle replacement costs and repairs are much higher for plow drivers now, this necessitated an increase in the rates to be paid. So those rates are published on the city website. Insurance, of course, is naturally required, and there is still a fuel adjustment. So we're looking for those plowing vendors, if you know somebody or you're interested, please reach out to Public Works. We'd like to stabilize, you know, the number of vendors we have before the first flakes fall. Animal control facility, we are now under a short-term lease for 30 Cross Street, and this has an option to buy should the property exceed our environmental testing requirements and upon guidance from the architect. We had planned to meet there tomorrow night for our meeting, but we don't have the keys yet.
Might be tomorrow, we're going to try.
We're postponing that meeting, but our next animal control facility meeting will be held at the location, so that all committee members and council, if you'd like to come, I'll let you know when that is, I mean, it is a public meeting, can see the facility. The need to kind of relook elsewhere was necessitated, because we do have to keep our current shelter open while we have construction, and as we were eyeing the property directly to east, I think it's east, to expand, we were quickly advised that the water sewer department would need that space to expand their operations once the PFAS regulations come down from EPA. We feel this is an extremely positive move, move. The committee is excited about this. We've got over two acres, it's a building already constructed, and it has adequate utilities, and those are huge costs when you're constructing a new building. The cost of the, the sale price is a little around 1.1 million, which leaves the balance of our budget for upgrades, enhancements, and build-out, especially on the HVAC. We continue to fundraise, we have some plans for some other fundraisers, but I wanted to share that we raised over $900 with the first round of animal control T-shirts, but don't despair if you didn't get one, although if you're size 3X, we do have some of those, so. More are ordered, and we'll announce when they're available for sale. So we're continuing to try to raise funds to augment any costs that maybe won't be covered by the bonding, because we, we want to deliver this, but we also want to be cognizant of taxpayers. Real quick on transportation, we're working on a survey for constituents to give us some thoughts and ideas of their needs, that'll be going out in the next two weeks. And we're also reviewing and commenting on the Route 72 in Riverside plans that are about. And just quickly on arts and culture, I talked about the movies, Jackie talked about Spooktacular, which is the Arts and Culture Commission event along with parks, the Coffin Race, and I have something under new business, something real exciting for arts and culture, but I'm going to wait for new business.
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Mark, you'll have plenty of committee reports when we get to item number 10 on this, but I know you haven't been to any committees yet, so we will move on. I'm going to use your ACO report to move us into old business, so a lot has happened in the last month or so with the animal control facility, I just want to also add, too, that I do think we have a very realistic opportunity to stay within budget because of this, and we know that that was actually going to be a big issue, so it's an innovative approach, we move very quickly on that. With that said, we did very quickly determine that the parcel on 75 Batisto Road would not need to be potentially rescinded from the D'Amato's. The D'Amato's did approach me personally, and let me know that they have a business opportunity, and that they wanted us to reconsider that. So I'm going to turn it over to Sue for a process that we will reconsider, and this is allowed to be done, because it's just one month since the last, there's been no intervening meetings, so, Sue, I'll have you bring that first motion up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to reconsider. At the Bristol City Council on July 9th, 2024, it was voted that the City of Bristol landlord give one-year written notice to D'Amato Associates LLC tenant of its intention to terminate the lease of a portion of city-owned property located at 75 Batisto Road, Assessors Map 3, Lot 31, as recommended by the Animal Control Building Committee. Said vote by the Bristol City Council was unanimous. Since the vote by the Bristol City Council on July 9th, 2024, there has been a changed situation that has developed, which the Bristol City Council should now reconsider, including the renegotiation of the lease, which was the subject of the termination vote. Therefore, I hereby move to reconsider the vote passed by the Bristol City Council on July 9th, 2024, to give one-year written notice to terminate the lease with D'Amato Associates LLC for the portion of city-owned property located at 75 Batisto Road, Assessors Map 3, Lot 31.
Second.
Great, so now I will call the vote, I'm going to do those in favor, those against, and we will have one abstention in this, because unfortunately Mark was not here for that meeting, so he can't reconsider. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And those that abstain?
Aye.
There you go. Okay, so the motion to reconsider has been approved, and now I'll look for a motion to amend that. Go ahead, Sue, and this is a little bit lengthy, so stay with us, you all have this though in front of you.
Okay. I make a motion to amend. I hereby move that the motion voted on by the Bristol City Council at its July 9th, 2024, meeting be stricken in its entirety and be amended as follows. I hereby move that the terms of the current lease dated 20 August 21st, 2020, with D'Amato Associates LLC tenant for a portion of the city-owned property known as 75 Batisto Road, Assessors Map 3, Lot 31, be modified as follows. Number one, the terms of this lease shall be for the period of September 1st, 2024, through August 31st, 2031. Number two, from September 1st, 2024, through August 31st, 2025, the rent due the City of Bristol shall be $3,300 per year, which is $275 a month. Number three, from September 1st, 2025, through August 31st, 2026, the rent due to the City of Bristol shall be $6,600 per year, which is $550 monthly. Number four, from September 1st, 2026, through August 31st, 2027, the rent due the City of Bristol shall be $6,831 per year, which is $569.25 a month. Number five, from September 1st, 2027, through August 31st, 2028, the rent due the City of Bristol shall be $7,070.08 per year, which is eight, I'm sorry, $589.17 a month. From September 1st, 2028, through August 31st, 2029, the rent due the City of Bristol shall be $7,317.53 per year, which is $609.79 a month. Number seven, from September 1st, 2029, through August 31st, 2030, the rent due the City of Bristol shall be $7,573.64 a year, which is $631.14 a month. Number eight, from September 1st, 2030, through August 31st, 2031, the rent due the City of Bristol shall be $7,838.72 per year, which is $653.23 a month. Number nine, tenant shall not assign the lease premises or any portion thereof without the prior written consent of landlord. Should the tenant sublease any portion of the lease premises, the tenant shall remain as guarantor of the lease. In addition, the tenant shall require his tenant to obtain insurance covers, coverage in accordance with Paragraph 7 of the modified lease. 10, all other provisions of the August 21st, 2020 lease, which are as restated in the new modified lease, shall remain in full force and effect. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same to review by Corporation Council.
Second.
Great, and I think you did a great job reading all that, I just wanted to call to everybody's attention, which might be a question, is that part of the original lease, which still remains in effect, is a one-year mutual termination in case we need to do something with PFAS remediation? What questions do you have or comments? I'll call the vote then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sue, appreciate that, I know that was a relatively big lift and a lot of work to do short-term, but I think we're helping the D'Amato's out, moving a couple projects forward, hopefully. All right, any other old business? We're under new business, Cheryl?
Yes, I'm very excited to bring this motion to the table, so I would like to bring forward a motion to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute a contract for providing of concessions operations at the Rockwell Theater within the Bristol Arts and Innovation Magnet School with Legacy Hospitality and Entertainment Group LLC for a one-year term, subject to review by the Office of Corporation Council.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Great. Cheryl, you want to add anything? I think you.
Yes, I do, this is, third time's a charm, we had got out two previous times to bid for concessions and came up empty. This third time, we had the Legacy Hospitality and Entertainment Group submit a beautiful bid package, quite with detail. We, today, a group of us interviewed them and went through the bid specs, talked with how they plan to operate, where they've operated, they currently have three active operations down in Westport. We were highly impressed with the professionalism and the ideas that, and the partnership they want to do, and recognize how important the Rockwell Theater is to Bristol. There was, I will say, one other non-conforming bid that came in, but it missed the deadline, and it was also non-conforming, so maybe if this doesn't work out, there'll be an opportunity later, but we're hoping there won't be, because we're very excited after, after the panel interviewed, we all walked away saying, this is somebody that we think is the right partner, so, you know, Roger was part of that group, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
But I'll prompt you with a question, then, to the financial side of this, the people worry maybe about the financial.
Right, there is no risk, it's all upside. We have the opportunity to have a minimum amount per show, or a percentage, whichever is greater.
Roger. Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. The minimum amount is $1,000 per event, which is great, but I do want to point out specifically that one of the things that we were asking them about is how they run their operations, do they run them all locally, where do they prep their food and things like that? And one thing that I did take note of is that they potentially will be engaging staff from Bristol locally, in terms of working within the theater, so they're still working through the staffing component. Very impressed by them, they were very good.
Yep. Any questions or comments?
Just one thing, if we get this contract executed in time, they will be available for Jimmy and the Parrots on September 7th, so, and they've already got ideas for the names of some of the snacks and beverages, too, so.
I think some margaritas will be in order, and I did ask for that, by the way, I will be at that concert, so. Yeah, I think some margaritas will be in order, and I did ask for that. By the way, I will be at that concert, so. That's that's, I think good news. We've been waiting for this for a long time. There was a lot of debate on uh concessions for a long time, and I'm I'm glad to see that we're moving forward. Comments or questions? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Turn it over to you, Erica, for resignations, and I think we only have one, right?
Yes. Richard Raymond was a two-dash-nine from Zoning Board of Appeals.
Great.
Okay, um, I thought
Actually, that's the only one, and
Oh, that came in to Erica.
Yeah, that came into Erica. We don't need to do anything here, I think, as you'll see in the uh resigni- in the uh appointments that we're going to reappoint this individual, so.
So I don't need
No, you don't need to. We don't need to send any letters, I don't think, at this point.
Welcome back letter.
This, this, yes, welcome back. This might take a little bit of time, but we're going to go through this one by one. Um, obviously, just for those in the audience with a new councilperson on board, it rearranges a lot of our boards and committees, so we'll 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 add some of those into the regular uh appointments by citizens. Uh, but at the end, there'll be a pretty long list of uh new appointments for council members. So let's start first with the Building Code of Appeals. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to reappoint Michael Labari. Uh, his term will expire in August of twenty-nine.
Motion, motion, uh, motion to approve. Second.
No, but you do the motion. You do the motion. I asked for the motion. Yep, that's good. And now a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Uh, on ECD, we have, I'm going to do these separately. Um, first, I'll entertain a motion to replace Carolyn Verakis and appoint Liz Cauto. Um, that term will expire in twelve twenty-five.
Second.
And Liz was in the audience. I think she got a call, but so uh we'll all get to meet Liz pretty soon. I'm very excited about this. Uh, she brings a lot of different experience and uh going to replace Carolyn, which was a a great community member to do, but she got too busy with her business, which is also a good thing. All right, oh, what's that? Oh, I thought I heard some echo here. That was me. Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The next is one of those first city council changes uh as per charter. The uh city council representative has to, if there is somebody different, um, assigned, uh, different political party, they have to be assigned. So I'm going to make a motion to replace Sebastian Panietto and appoint Mark Dickow uh to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That carries. All right, school readiness. Every August, uh, we redo the school readiness committee, so um, I'm going to do two separate, but most of these are going to be together. So the first is Andrew Howe was uh on the School Readiness County Council, so we need to replace him. And we are going to appoint Eric Rosengren as our council member representative. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Now for the uh School Readiness Council, we can do all these together, but I'll read them off. A motion to reappoint Deana Shaffrick. Uh, all of these expire on August of twenty-six. Uh, we're going to also reappoint Courtney Sugarman, Christina Tanguey, Amber Lipscomb, Brenda Moore, Val Pelletier, Jennifer St. John, Val Toner, Michelle Herons, Matt Baranowski, um, Michelle Fanguilo. No, sorry, that one is off. Sorry, that's my bad. Thank you. I got the old sheet here. Uh, yes, so remove that one. Yacina Fuentes, Wendy McGrath, Susan Lee, Maureen Eaton, Cecilia Guere, Sarah Holmes, Jillian Roman, Donna Kozier, and Alyssa McGee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor. So we did correct that one. You got that correction for me. Thank you. Um, Bristol Historic Commission. Oh, sorry, we got to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't have that on this list. Did I print out the wrong one? Can you read it for me, the ones that we need to do, Erica? Sorry about that. I had like five copies of these. I obviously grabbed the wrong one.
Megan Adams will be appointed to replace Michelle Fanguilo.
Okay. So can I have that motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Donna, I apologize, but I think we got a thumbs up. We finally got that one right. That was our hardest one. All right, we're on Bristol Historic Commission. We have uh two new appointments. Um, both are alternate positions, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Keith Elder and Alicia Jennings. Though these will both expire on eight twenty-nine. These are five-year terms.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, Housing Code Board of Appeals. Uh, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Steve Combe as a alternate member, and he will expire on six twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, that meets ad hoc and Transportation Committee meets uh every other month, so we are going to make a motion to replace Maria Montelli Tramazo with Steve Combe. Uh, same individual. That term will expire seven twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, Youth Commission. Uh, these are all reimpor- reappointments. Ryan Broderick, the new term will expire in six twenty-seven. Uh, we are going to appoint Donna Osuch. Her term will expire on eight twenty-seven. And we'd like to reappoint Deborah All. Uh, that term will expire in six twenty-seven and reappoint John Lukasevich, and that term expires in six twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody uh opposed? All right, I had Jonathan twice there on the sheet, but I think we got him. Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, we're going to replace Mike Arasinko with Mike Jennings. That expires on seven twenty-seven.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And so we talked about Richard Raymond earlier. He unfortunately was busy. He had a two-dash-nine um uh uh termination, but we'd like to reappoint him. He's ready to serve again, and that term will expire in seven twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
Sebastian gets a second. I heard Cheryl first. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, now the the new council member appointments, Diversity Council. Um, we're just going to appoint Mark Dickow um to that, and the expirations for all of these go through, uh, all of these will go through the election period, which is eleven twenty-five. So I need a motion to appoint Mark Dickow to Diversity Council.
So moved. Second.
Your pick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Energy Commission, we are going to replace uh Andrew Howe as the council member on that and appoint Mark Dickow. He actually was the um citizen member, so we'll have to replace the citizen member next month, so entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On Fire Board, we're going to replace Andrew Howe's appointment with um
Me.
Cheryl Tebow. Good, yeah. I wanted to make sure it was right, but it wasn't reading right. Uh, can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On Ordnance Committee, uh, we need to replace Jackie Olson and appoint Mark Dickow.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the Park Board, we need to replace Andrew Howe, and we'll put Jackie Olson in his position.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On Public Works, we need to replace Cheryl Tebow and appoint Mark Dickow.
So moved. Yeah.
Second.
Uh, Cheryl's going to miss that one, but I will make this comment here too. Any councilperson can show up at those meetings and they just don't have a vote, but uh then you all have a vote when it comes back to council.
You get a life back. It's
Yeah, very good. Mark's going to be busy, as we all know. I need the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the Real Estate Committee, we are going to replace Andrew Howe with Mark Dickow.
Move approval.
Second.
Sebastian gets a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On Salary Committee, we have to replace Eric Rosengren, and we appoint Mark Dickow.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And I think it's the last one. Uh, we need to replace Andrew Howe on the South Side HVAC Committee, and we're going to appoint Mark Dickow.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Oh, I got, we got one. What do you have, Attorney Corwicky?
Mister Mayor, I'm not sure whether you intended to make the uh replacement on the Planning Commission this evening.
Yeah, uh, we did, but we found out there was a a registration area error, so I'm glad you brought it up. We're going to hold that until September, but thank you very much. This is why we have multiple people looking at this. Uh, that's the hardest part of the job. But uh, we got it done tonight. Uh, appreciate it. Mark, welcome to all of those boards and commissions. We have a great council that's been working together on these. We have some experience, so uh, you're more than welcome to reach out to any of us at any time to work through some of these issues, so congratulations. Uh, your wife's back there too. She may never see you again either.
Careful what you wish.
That's why she's here.
Yep.
Exactly. She's going to have to come to all those meetings with
A couple of times.
All right, uh, number eleven, we have um the uh, and actually, I didn't give Mister Ducko the correct answer on that one too, so um I forgot that this was on here. So we have the the resolution to approve the en- enabling of the city council to uh assume and extend the powers and obligations authorized under the Connecticut City Town and Development Act for additional five years.
Mister Mayor, if I might just briefly?
Yes.
Um, the the powers that were listed are the powers that are now enumerated in that statute
Correct.
best of our knowledge.
Yep.
We're going to uh connect with um the Economic Development Director, and we'll reach out to Mister Ducko to tomorrow to confirm that. But let me also um point out to the members of the council, uh, there was a Supreme Court case that came down that altered uh the way things have been done since the time of the uh Ducko case. It's called, the the case is Kilo, uh, and it has to do with municipal powers in in eminent domain cases. Um, the the, you you need to satisfy very specific uh requirements under that uh court decision. In addition, the state has its own separate statutes dealing with eminent domain, so those would still be in in play. That has nothing to do with the economic development uh package. So that would be the the general explanation to Mister Ducko. Uh, hopefully he would um
Yeah, so I'm going to do a public apology because I I forgot that we were voting for this tonight too, but it wasn't part of the public hearing. So I was correct in that it's not connected, but unfortunately, we are going to have to make this decision tonight as well, um, but not directly related, so. Any comments or questions from the group? All right, I did, uh, we didn't make the motion yet.
I'll I'll move the motion.
Great.
Second.
Second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
It's a resolution.
A resolution. We got to do the roll call though. Sorry, Erica.
And are we waiving the reading?
Let's do the motion first. Let's go back if you don't mind here, then we'll do the motion to waive the reading. Can we do that, Sebastian?
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, and you can just restate the motion that we did before that we're going to
I I re- re- instate the motion.
Great.
Second.
I think those are the same too. I'm hoping that was. All right, all those in favor?
Roll call.
The roll call, Jesus. I I got on a roll with the uh announcement, so you'll have to forgive me.
Councilmember Dickow.
Aye.
Councilmember Olson.
Aye.
Councilmember Panietto.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengren.
Aye.
Councilmember Tebow.
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler.
Yes.
And the mayor.
Aye. Motion passes through the resolution. The right roll call. Thank you. I I think I got through that one. Now we're on to B, and Sebastian, why don't you go ahead and read that motion?
Make a motion to authorize Mayor Jeffrey Cagiano or Acting Mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement and to com- complete the property transaction subject to the approval of Corporation Council with High Energy X-rays International Corporation DBA H E X I Corp, or it's assigns for the sale of the Southeast Bristol Business Park property known as Lot Six, as reflected on the map, known as roadway plan from A dash N, consulting engineers dated August two thousand and six for the purchase price of one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. And that this matter be referred to the Planning Commission for completion of a CGS eight dash twenty-four report and to the City Council Real Estate Committee for completion of a CGS seven dash one six three E public hearing for the sale of municipal-owned, municipally-owned property.
Second. Great. Justin, I don't know if you want to make any comments on this. I know that we're we're fast filling out the the Business Park, so this is uh very good news, but um some quick comments would be great.
No, thank you, and thank to the the council, and welcome, actually, Councilman Dickow to ECD too. Um, so very quick, um, Hexi Corp, uh, what they're best known as um, is actually based in Wallingford now. They've been in the game for like thirty years. They um, very, very complicated. If the if the project that I talked about last month seemed complicated, this one's like times two. This one, um, Hexi Corp designs industrial X-ray systems. Um, I wrote it in our summary, but you're able to see through very thick material to what's on the other side. Um, and these systems are also used in um for security screening purposes, like at cargo uh for cargo and at airports and that sort of thing. Um, a lot of the work is is confidential. It's government-based. Um, but I've been working with Hexi Corp for probably a year and a half, been out to their location several times, and we're excited to work with the ownership. This is the beginning stages, right? So the ownership, they have to look at their site plan, um, building costs, all this sort of thing. But um this approval, hopefully tonight, basically allows that work to to move forward, and we'll see how it goes. Hopefully, we'll be out a ribbing cutting fairly soon.
Exciting. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to number twelve, which is contracts. So I'll entertain a motion to award contract two P two four dash zero nine nine design of the Pecrotic River Trail interconnecting Rockwell Park, the West End, Bracket Park, Memorial Boulevard, and Middle Street to San- Stan Tech Consulting Services in the amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars and to refer to the Office of Corp Counsel for contract review and to authorize a mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said contract.
Move approval.
Jackie, you got the second for me? I thought I heard you. Good. Second from Jackie. Uh, yeah, this is starting to move forward. Remember, this is, we're working through NVCOG with this and uh getting assistance from them to to do that bike trail as we have uh never-ending work on Route Seventy-Two, but it's a, it's a good thing. Questions or comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, twelve B, uh, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute a letter of intent with Green Skies Clean Energy LLC as a solar development partner to enter into a non-residential renewable energy solutions, NRES, revenue-sharing agreement with the city of Bristol.
Move approval.
And second?
Second.
Great. Uh, we do have Roger here if you guys have questions, so um this is the new solar program. I have to say, these things are extremely complicated. We did get help from uh a uh an outside vendor to kind of pull these things together. Many of the cities and towns can now take advantage of uh solar revenue, and other towns will actually have the solar panels there. Um, but we kind of take the credits back for the energy and then get paid for it. So um, these are really good deals, but um they're very complicated. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I I want, that's good. I I'm glad we went through that one quickly. All right, uh, and twelve C, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the contract two P two three dash oh five one. Construction manager at risk for construction of a new northeast middle school with Damato Downs Joint Venture to reflect an increase in the total amount not to exceed eleven million, seven hundred six thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents necessary to amend the contract. So moved.
Second.
Great. Questions on this one? This has a lot to do with the self-performance changes uh that the state handed down to us. We've been through that before. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right, number thirteen is our executive session, and uh Attorney Corwicky, who will be going to an exec- executive session with us.
The the attorneys from our office, our outside counsel, uh Keith Trumbo, and uh Chief Morello, I believe, is going to uh also attend.
Motion. Excellent, go ahead.
Motion entered into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, just a reminder, uh, we were in executive session. No votes were taken. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Mister Dickow, I think you have the motion.
I move that the litigation matter, U.S. District Court Case Number Three Twenty-Two CV Zero Zero Three Seven Eight MPS Ramon Antonio Lopez versus Paul Gorman be settled in the amount of fifty thousand dollars as a full and final sediment of settlement of all pending claims and that the Corporation Council or his designated being authorized to execute execute any and all documents to effectuate resolution of this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. That's it. I don't think we have anything else to come before us. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. I'm giving it to Dickow. Second, uh, to you, Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion Anybody opposed? Motion carries.